Good evening, everybody. Before we get started, I'd like to welcome Reverend Jerry Dockery from Crab Apple First Baptist Church to lead us in invocation.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, let us pray. Heavenly Father, Creator of all life, you've made us and called us to live in community. You teach and empower us to care for one another, to aspire to reflect the compassion of Jesus Christ, your Son, and our Lord. We pray for those whose position and authority affect the lives of others. We pray that you would inspire them with a vision of the community as it might be, where love of neighbor and concern for one another drive out discontent and strife, anxiety, and fear. Pray that you would help us all to work together with one heart and will, with sympathy and understanding, to serve the common good, to minister to people in trouble and despair, and to multiply true grace and peace among us. We ask that you make your glory great among us, and that your holy desires be clear to us. Receive our petitions, gracious God, as we humbly offer them in Christ's blessed name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. Now, I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Milton City Council for Monday, June 19th, 2017, to order. Sooty, our city clerk, will you please call the roll and make general announcements?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be happy to call roll for the June 19th, 2017, regular meeting. I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Those attending the meeting who would like to provide public comment either during the public hearing or during the call for public comment, you are required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on the item. There is no public comment for consent agenda items or items under first presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards are received by the city clerk prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable. The city council may allow public comment on either an agenda item or general public comment from a representative of such an organized group or association, provided that the individual has filed a notarized affidavit that they have the authority to speak on behalf of the organization on a form provided by the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited, so please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll this evening, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Thurman.
Here.
Councilmember Matt Koontz.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Les.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longoria.
Here.
Councilmember Rick Morick.
Here.
And for the record, Councilmember Burt Hewitt is absent. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening. I want to welcome everybody here tonight, and it's excited to see pretty much full house, and want to welcome the Cambridge and Milton girls lacrosse team. We're proud to have you guys here. And for those of you that it's your first visit to your new city hall, I hope you guys like it. What do y'all think? We're proud of it. So, Sooty, if you will please call the next item.
Our next item this evening is approval of the meeting agenda. Agenda item number 17-149.
Okay. I think on the agenda, we'd like to move on to new business, the nomination of the Equestrian Committee to after the consent agenda. Hold on, right before reports and presentations, if that's all right with council.
Okay.
Anything else, anybody? Okay, I'll open up for motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to be approve the meeting agenda as amended.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion from Councilmember Koontz, second from Councilmember Morick. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimous, Sooty. Okay, next item is public comment. Do we have any public comments, Sooties? Okay. Public comment is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor and city council, and to provide input and opinions on any matter that is not scheduled for its own public hearing during today's meeting. There's no discussion on items on the consent agenda or first presentation from the public or from council. Each citizen who chooses to participate in public comment card must complete a comment card and submit it to the city clerk. Please remember, this is not a time to engage the mayor or members of city council in conversation. When your name is called, please step forward and speak into the microphone stating your name and address for the record, and you'll have five minutes for remarks. Okay, Sooty, I'll open up for public comment if you'll call the first speaker.
Our first speaker is Roger Bauer.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Roger Bauer, and I live at 2020 Knightsbridge Way in the Westminster at Crab Apple subdivision with my wife and three sons, whose ages are six, three, and two. My residence places me on the border between the cities of Alpharetta and Milton and adjacent to the proposed development at 12455 Broadwell Road in Crab Apple. Primary variance V17-010, to reduce the required number of parking spaces, has been filed and is being considered during tomorrow's Board of Zoning Appeals meeting. After this meeting, the only available administrative remedy relates to the design of the development. The parcel to be developed is zoned as T4. While the zone allows for mixed use, it assumes a quote-unquote "primarily residential urban fabric" with a mix of houses and townhouses with scattered commercial activity. In this development, the project consists of over 20,000 total square feet of commercial usage and two buildings with three residential units, which means it is primarily commercial with predominantly commercial activity. This begs the question of how the city is defining the T4 zone and how it is ensuring that it is primarily residential in view of the literal reading of the Form-Based Code. More fundamentally than the parking space variance, I am deeply concerned that no landscape buffer is required between single-family housing and commercial activity per the Crab Apple Form-Based Code. I'm equally troubled that the landscape buffer variance has been withdrawn from tomorrow's BZA meeting. The city of Milton's Deerfield adopted and Arnold Mill proposed Form-Based Codes require a 50-foot undisturbed buffer with a 10-foot improvement setback where adjacent to either a T2 zone or a single-family residential use not located within the district. The developer is currently requesting a 30-foot undisturbed buffer, but only if they receive a parking variance to reduce the number of required parking spaces from 97 to 53. If the variance is not approved, the parking spaces will be placed in the buffer, further constricting the buffer either now or in the future through administrative action. Kathy Cook, the Community Development Director for the city of Alpharetta, and I've enclosed the letter to all of you, has provided public comments on behalf of the city of Alpharetta for tomorrow's BZA meeting. She notes that a predominant commercial use adjacent to a residential use within the city of Alpharetta would require a 50-foot undisturbed buffer, and asks for the consideration of the importance of providing a transitional buffer and the impact on the quality of life for existing residences that a traditional transitional buffer provides. Adding to Kathy Cook's points, a lack of adequate buffer creates a hardship, as the buffer is reduced based on noise, pollution, and light pollution resulting in part from a 6:00 a.m. business opening, the privacy afforded based on the sightlines from either second-story building to our homes, and the impact to mature trees as the buffer zone is decreased in size. In light of the Deerfield and Arnold Mill Form-Based Codes, in light of the city of Alpharetta's public comments, and in light of the urgency of the V17-010 primary variance requests being considered at tomorrow's BZA meeting, I request that the city of Milton issue a moratorium on this development until the council has had the opportunity to deliberate and determine whether the Crab Apple Form-Based Code should be amended to additionally require a 50-foot undisturbed buffer with a 10-foot improvement setback where adjacent to residential use not located within the Crab Apple district. I further request that the city council deliberate on whether the current Form-Based Code interpretation of T4 comports with both the intention of the Crab Apple master plan and the literal text of the Crab Apple Form-Based Code. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Okay, Sooty, could you please call the next speaker?
And our next speaker is Mr. Tim Becker.
Tim Becker, 1562 Canterbury Chase. I wanted to address two topics tonight. The first topic is I wanted to thank council for your strong, united, and unequivocal letter and resolution with regards to the tax assessments, which were, as we know, arbitrary and inflated. The mayor did speak at the BOA meeting in downtown Atlanta and did a very good job of representing the city. I hope the city will continue to pursue this matter and get tax fairness and justice for citizens. The second topic that I wanted to address tonight is transparency, and specifically, I want to address the use of non-city email. It's come to my attention that council members on a regular basis use personal and company email for city business. I've submitted a series of ORRs, which are open records requests, and found this to be the case. One council member in particular seems to go seamlessly between company emails, personal emails, and city emails. I spoke with the Attorney General of Georgia with their office about this, and they told me that the use of personal emails is not forbidden. However, they told me that the reason for this is that there are small towns in Georgia from one of those towns, Dudley, Georgia, it's a tiny speck on the map, where they don't have city servers, so the only way that they can conduct business by email is by using personal email. The Attorney General's Office further told me if your city has a server, then everybody who has a city email address should be using that server. So, to use company and personal emails, to me, is singularly non-transparent, and I believe it needs to stop. I believe that city council needs to consider an ordinance to ban the use of personal and company email except in cases of emergencies. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Sooty, do we have any more?
That's all.
Okay, we'll close public comment, and we'll move on to the consent agenda. Sooty, if you would please sound the items.
First item is approval of the June 5th, 2017, regular city council meeting minutes. Agenda item number 17-150. Next is approval of the financial statements and investment report for the period ending May 2017. Agenda item number 17-151. Next, approval of amendment number one to agreement for vehicle maintenance and repairs between the city of Milton and Express Oil Change LLC. Agenda item number 17-152. Approval of a work order between the city of Milton and VC3, Inc. for conference room phones. Agenda item number 17-153. Our fifth item is approval of a construction services agreement between the city of Milton and Pavement Technology, Inc. for an asphalt rejuvenation treatment on various city streets. Agenda item number 17-154. Our sixth and final consent agenda item this evening is approval of a contract between the city of Milton and Georgia Conservancy for professional consulting and planning services regarding land acquisition for the Milton Greenspace Advisory Committee. Agenda item number 17-155.
Mayor, I'll move to approve the consent agenda as prepared by staff.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, second for approval. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous, Sooty. Okay, if we can move on to new business that we changed on the agenda. Sooty, if you'll please call the next item.
This item is consideration of a resolution, appointing a member to the city of Milton Equestrian Committee for District 1, Post 2. Agenda item number 17-157, Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Okay, and I'm honored to be doing this on behalf of Councilmember Hewitt for his district to nominate Susan Day. Susan has lived in the Milton and Alpharetta area since 2002, and she's Director of Counseling at Mill Springs Academy. She's also been involved with horses for most of her life in the 1980s, when she was a young girl. She was co-owner of a large boarding, training, and breeding barn on Birmingham Highway. She currently boards two warm-blood horses at Iron Horse Farm, an Arabian Training Facility in Milton. She's also an amateur dressage rider and also retraining an off-the-track thoroughbred. She's also owned hunters and jumpers in the past and really appreciate all breeds of horses. She really loves the equestrian community in Milton and is very interested in working to preserve and enhance those qualities which makes Milton a special place to live. So with that, I'd like to nominate Susan for that position on our Equestrian Committee. Do I have a motion and a second?
Mayor, I'll move to nominate Susan Day to the Equestrian Committee, District 1, Position 2.
Second.
Okay, got a motion from Councilmember Lusk, second from Councilmember Koontz. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. If Susan would step forward, and we will swear her in and sign the paperwork. One thing that I learned, I'll tell all students here, when you're reading a pledge out to someone, then you ask them to repeat it, if you look them straight in the eyes, they get messed up and can't repeat it. You say it, then you gotta look down, and then you stare at them, and then they get mixed up. Just as you and the crew rage right in and repeat after me, I do solemnly swear and affirm
I do solemnly swear and affirm that I will faithfully perform the duties of that I will faithfully perform the duties of
the Milton Equestrian Committee
the Milton Equestrian Committee
of the city
of the city
and that I will support and defend the charter thereof
and I will support and defend the charter thereof
as well as the Constitution
as well as the Constitution
and the laws of the state of Georgia
and the laws of the state of Georgia
and of the United States of America
and of the United States of America.
So much, and if the council will join. Another thing, just so you guys know, one of the things that makes all the committees and volunteers and other groups that our citizens participate in and give their time and efforts because they really care, and it really makes a big difference.
Take one step this way. Half a step, one more, I'm sorry, this way. Here, one, two, three. Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, all the lacrosse players, it's just one person to pick. Okay, Sooty, if you'd please call the next item.
Our next item this evening is a proclamation recognizing Cambridge High School and Milton High School Girls Lacrosse Team Day. This is being presented by Councilmember Matt Koontz.
All right, so for those of you that haven't heard, we had a very unique and special event that happened for our city, and mainly for our student athletes in the city of Milton. We actually had both Cambridge High School Girls Lacrosse and Milton High School Girls Lacrosse play against each other for the state championship. And regardless of who won or lost, we're very proud of all of you for being here because it's an example of what is one of the special things about our community, and the reason why it's a privilege for me to give this proclamation as well. Sports has been very important in my life. Most people don't know this, but my father was actually studying to be a priest before he decided to play football. Otherwise, I wouldn't be here if not for sports, so it's a very important thing. What you don't realize is that there are opportunities that come with athletics that many of you aren't even going to realize yet. But the values and the virtues that you learn while playing sports will help you become better people for your families, for your businesses, for your communities, and maybe one day you'll get into politics one day too, because that is a contact sport. So, but I'm honored to give this proclamation to all of you, and afterwards, when I'm done reading it, if you'll all come up, and we'll give you one for you to frame as well. So, so proclamation, Cambridge High School and Milton High School Girls Lacrosse Team Day. Whereas lacrosse is a sport that requires skillful hand-eye coordination, mental awareness, and physical endurance, and whereas in 2002, the Georgia High School Association officially sanctioned lacrosse as a high school sport in 2005, recognize lacrosse as a full-fledged high school sport. We can add that later. Whereas the Cambridge High School and Milton High School Girls Lacrosse Teams have a tradition of excellence and accomplishment in academic and athletic competition, reflecting the highest ideals of hard work, training, and sportsmanship, and whereas both of these teams made it to the Georgia High School Association State Championship in 2017, and whereas these players are champions not only on the field, but also in the classroom, in the community, and in life, we are proud that these great teams are located in Milton, Georgia. Now therefore, we, the mayor and city council of the city of Milton hereby dictate and proclaim Monday, June 19th, as Cambridge High School and Milton High School Girls Lacrosse Team Day in the city of Milton, Georgia. Given under our hand and seal of the city of Milton, Georgia, on this 19th day of June, 2017. So if all of you will come down with the city council and any administrator or parent as well associated with this, or coaches, please come on down as well. She wants to stand on her desk. Coming down, yeah. So back against the wall, some.
You can, you can lay down, that's fine.
They can get in the sorority girl pose.
Will you swap places with this one behind you? Yeah, if you would step forward and just like that way. Sorry. Do you have any playdates over here? Here's your playmate.
Thank you.
Yeah, cancel tight, man, just a little bit. Okay, one, two, three.
This is like a, this is like a family picture, sounds a hundred.
Well, one more, one more.
Okay, everyone, one, two, three. Excellent, perfect, nice move.
Thank y'all.
I forgot what I said. I forgot what I said to that high school girl. Does that bring back memories? Sooty? Just a second, I'll ask you to read out the first presentation item. Bye.
Thanks.
Thanks. Congratulations. All right, Sooty.
They're going through the thing.
It's going backwards, Sooty. All right, Sooty, if you'd please call the, read out the first presentation item.
This item is consideration of an ordinance of the city council to authorize Fulton County to conduct elections. Agenda item number 17-156.
Okay, do I have a motion on the first presentation item?
Mayor, I make a motion and we approve agenda item number 17-156.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Koontz, second by Councilmember Lusk. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous, Sooty. Okay, we don't have any items on our public hearing or zoning agenda tonight, so we'll move to unfinished business. Sooty, if you'll please sound that item.
This item is consideration of an ordinance of the city of Milton, Georgia, to amend Chapter 4, alcoholic beverages of the code of the city of Milton, Georgia. Bring your own beverage. Agenda item number 17-145. First presentation was at the June 5th meeting. Ms. Sarah Ladart.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is just an error that we made when we submitted Chapter 4 last time when we actually went to implement this. We realized we kept the word restaurant in there instead of establishment, and then the attorney made some other suggestions on what we should remove. But it's just a correction to make it what we talked about it being the whole time.
Is there any questions on that? Okay. All right, I'll open up. Do I have a motion on this item?
Mayor, I move that we approve agenda item number 17-145.
The lot sizes range from around 3,000 square feet to 5,000 square feet. So we've got the smaller ones sort of to the west here, and then the larger lots along Huntington Place here. Most of these lots are rear-loaded, so they either front a road or a green space area. This development has a large amount of common area and open space throughout. This area right here is going to be the location for the future amenity, the pool area. This area to the south, which is actually in Phase One, they're going to develop with pedestrian access with a little picnic area over there. And then they are also proposing sort of a greenway along the creek here. And then another nice feature of this development is the detention pond, which they've actually sort of made it more of an amenity. You can see a little bit of this part of the plat where they're showing three different ponds, sort of spread out there with sidewalks and trails and a really nice retaining wall here that's going to be kind of a modular brick wall and very nice landscaping. So they're sort of making it a feature, but it serves for quantity. And then overall, the development, it's really not that steep there. It's gently rolling down towards the creek. It's carbon gutter. They've got stormlines and structures, and it's on sewer. Any questions?
Okay. Any questions from council? Matt?
I guess they followed all aspects of the law and of our codes in doing this.
Yeah, this one's compliant.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, I'll open up for a motion. There's no more questions.
Mr. Mayor, I suggest that we approve agenda item number 17-158 for the final plat for Kensington Phase Two Revision.
I'll second that, but can we be more forceful and suggest?
Yes.
Make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we adopt.
I have a second. I have a suggestion of a mo, no. I have a motion from Councilmember Moore with a second from Councilmember Longoria for approval of this item. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Melissa. Okay, we'll get into reports and presentations. Does the council have anything they would like to report on? Karen?
I have been in conversation with our community development, our city manager and city attorney concerning a possible emergency moratorium for the Crab Apple Form Based Code related to properties that were adjacent to single-family residential. I believe we have some problems with our Form Based Code in the Crab Apple area that need to be corrected, and I would like to see a moratorium put in place until these corrections can be done. We could not get it on the agenda tonight because it, the agenda had already been published, but we may be having a special call meeting in order to put in the emergency moratorium for the Crab Apple Form Based Code. So it is, but coincides with the Deerfield Code concerning properties adjacent to the single-family residential.
Okay. Anybody else? Matt?
I know it's been a crazy week with regards to the tax situation, but I want to thank Joe for going down there and Steve as well for the, going in front of the board of the assessors as well. So I, and I heard good news. I think that the state legislator is going to be able to do something that with an 1880s law. So that's exciting. But it's been a lot of work for a lot of people. A lot of elected officials jumped all over this, and it's important for our citizens whose income has stayed flat, but you know, the tax base has gone up over 50% on some properties. And so for everybody that's been involved in that, just wanted to say thanks because that's a big deal for all of our citizens.
Okay, and also thanks to, I know council is all either gone to meetings and has talked with people and you know, everybody's involved, so thank you all for that.
And I want to thank our citizens as well that spoke to them, and that's, it was very important for all of them, and you know, we appreciate all of that.
And I assume right now, as far as Milton's concerned, we're just kind of in a holding pattern till we see what is done countywide, and then once, once we know exactly what they're going to do, that'll allow us to know what we need to do.
So Stacy and I are working through various scenarios depending on what, what comes out of that. Obviously, I've corresponded with some of you as well on some potential ideas, but we, yes, we're in a holding pattern. We're hoping that it gets rectified where it should get rectified.
Right.
But in the event that it does not, we're creating different contingencies for you to consider.
Okay. Anything else, council? All right, we'll move on to staff.
Mayor, before we move on to staff, I just want to bring us back to Councilmember Thurman's comments. Couple of quick things. First, in conversations with Ken, two things I think we need to, we need to talk about. First, the potential emergency moratorium. That emergency moratorium, from what I understand and from my conversations with Ken, I just want to be clear that it's going to have no effect on the project that was brought up during public comment earlier, because that's already in the pipeline. Secondly, I need to know whether or not to construct this or ask Ken to put together this emergency moratorium. So I need to know whether or not there is an interest amongst council to consider this and move this forward.
I think the issue is that the Deerfield and the proposed Arnold Mill Code that were never, Form Based Code that were never passed, had a section in them that basically stated you had to have certain buffers when you were next to single-family residential. For somehow or another, in our codification, it is not in the Crab Apple Form Based Code. That section is not, it doesn't list any particular buffers. I have asked staff to go back and look to see whether or not and what we actually voted on, if it was in the Crab Apple Form Based Code at the time we voted on it, because Deerfield and Arnold Mill came from Crab Apple. So I don't know, it doesn't make sense that this would have just been added in, just to make sure that somehow or another, they, it wasn't already supposed to be in there. We just somehow or another lost it in the codification process. But if not, then I think we need to get it in there as quickly as possible so that we're consistent.
So, go ahead, Ken.
Let me ask a question too legally, and certainly if the council wants to do that, I'm open to looking at that, but I know, you know, in the past moratoriums, you've got to have a specific reason and a timeframe. And also to the city manager's point, unfortunately, once a process is already in, it works, you can't go retroactive.
No.
So if this, if this is something that the council wants to, you know, to change, but does it have to be an emergency moratorium, or, you know, can we get that in the process through a normal process?
Right. So the typical reason for the moratorium is when a problem is identified is to, to prevent any additional instances of it occurring. So that's to Councilmember Thurman's point, that would be what the purpose of this moratorium would be. And then the question becomes, do you want it imposed very quickly, as in special call meeting quickly, or can it wait until such time as we can put it on a regular agenda? Even if we get it on a regular agenda, what we do is impose what I call an emergency moratorium for 30 days while we run a legal ad and then extend it further so we can allow the modifications to go through the public hearing hopper.
Rick?
To Councilman Thurman's question about going back and looking at this to see, because we've got a BZA meeting coming up tomorrow, can we have staff go back and look and actually look back to when that was passed and see if in fact that was supposed to be in there and somehow it did not make it in?
Right. We've done that already, Kathy. Have we found anything?
Robin isn't out here, so I don't know if we actually went back to the original document. It's not in the immunity code as far as I know, which is what we use. But I did promise Councilwoman Thurman that tomorrow I would go back and look at the original document that was, that came before this council for approval, to see if there was any deviation.
So Robin and I have had just some basic tangential conversations regarding this, and her feeling was that it was, there was an issue that the Deerfield, Deerfield was adopted specifically out of Deerfield, doesn't explain why that, that would be in the Arnold Mill Code. But as of Friday, she had not found anything that would have supported that as being unintentionally left out, part of the original, the original language and then left out. Tomorrow, obviously, will, if there is anything left to do, led to do that. But one, if I could follow up with one, one question that I think need, that we need to talk about. So where the T4 abuts up to residential, which would be in the specific location where we abut up to Alpharetta, I don't, if we're looking for an emergency moratorium, is it anywhere T4 butts up to, let's say, T2, which is also another, 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 it's similar to AG1. However, in a Form Based Code, it's not, it's not anticipated that you will have a, these types of buffers in there. Or are we looking only in places where we abut up to AG1 or something similar to where we're, the situation at Alpharetta? Because that is a very limited, there, there's only three or four locations in the entire city where this type of situation can occur. So this was the reason that I said, you know, I think we kind of have to have a deeper conversation to determine what it is, though I guess we could use our 30-day, our 30-day period in the emergency to make sure we flesh that out. Right. The law anticipates that the moratorium needs to be drafted as narrowly as needed to accomplish the objectives of the government. So to the city manager's point, the more narrow we can draft it to accomplish what we need to accomplish, the better.
And my thought was, we don't have a council meeting next Monday, so it's two weeks from today, and we don't know what might come in. If somebody hears we're considering it, they may come in and, you know, try to get a, you know, file for some kind of building permit or something that would be a problem for us. And that's why I really wanted to try to get it done as quickly as possible to get the, you know, emergency moratorium done, so that we can look at this and find out where there is an issue and what we need to do to correct it.
Did, and as we were talking, and I think, refresh me, do we know if there, could, is there, did you say two or three, or are there specific, are there any properties that might fall under this that could be suspect to this?
So we've identified specific locations throughout the city where T4 abuts up to residential developments outside the city of Milton. There are areas like this that abut up to residential areas. However, they're entirely contained within the Crab Apple Form Based Code. If that's the case, if we're looking to do it wherever residential and commercial activities abut, then there's obviously more opportunities. But if it's similar to what we're talking about in this specific situation, those potentials are very limited.
Okay, and that's the only thing I would, you know, make sure that we're not doing something that really couldn't happen. But certainly open up to council, what thoughts with the council?
I'm okay meeting, if that's the request of the council.
Okay. And we're going to start working on that, and we'll schedule in the very near future.
You have to 24-hour notice on an emergency?
Right, at least 24 hours' notice. We'll adopt an emergency moratorium that'll last 30 days, and then we'll run legal ads and have a public hearing and then do longer moratoriums so we can get the code revised.
Okay.
I'll start schedule, I'm going to start reaching out for potential times, probably this evening.
Okay, thanks. Anything else, council? Staff? Steve?
Nothing else from me. I would pass it along to, I think we have a couple of reports.
Okay, Kathy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few items. We've got the, the, we've received the first draft of the tree preservation ordinance, and we've scheduled a stakeholders' meeting for July 12th, and then it will go on to the Planning Commission the end of July, and then on to you all for a work session in the middle of August. So we are moving that ordinance along. In addition, we are moving along the proposed unit development code. The consultant and staff are compiling a list of issues within the existing codes, and we're going to present that to you at the July city council work session. And they've done an analysis of all of our codes, and they're going to bring to you their findings to get some direction from you before we proceed any further. Okay?
Okay.
It's called a diagnostic, was the word I was looking for. In addition, we, we have a draft noise ordinance that will go to the Planning Commission the end of this month, and then to you for a work session in July with consideration of the ordinance at the end of July, at the July 26th meeting. We've got an application for two rooftop antennas at Verizon Place, and you will be hearing them also at the end of July. And that essentially are the initiatives and applications that are moving through at this point.
Anybody have any questions for Kathy?
Just one. Kathy, so just curious, why the change in the noise ordinance? I just wasn't sure what brought that out.
It was found that it was very hard to administer the way it was written. So we have simplified it to make it much more readable by our residents as well as by our code enforcement and police. So it's a much more usable type of ordinance.
Kathy, we haven't had any problems come up. Is this something that makes sense from a communication perspective?
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
Awesome.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, Chief Austin? Think about police.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. First tonight, I would just like to present some of our year-to-date statistics. Our accidents continue to be down in the city about 7% from this time last year, with our personal injury collisions down 24%. Our Part One crimes, as we met last time, they were up 28%. We are down to up 9%, so we're catching up to where we were last year with some very focused efforts behind that. And our Part One crimes, just to snapshot of that, for the last 20 days are down about We did have one violent incident since I met with you last. It was an aggravated assault. We have two subjects that were arrested. It was an own victim and offender, and based on those arrests, we continue with a 100% clearance rate on our violent crimes, which have been only five this year. In police news, in this room, on last Wednesday, we had a town hall meeting with members of our Crab Apple community, which was attended by a very small but very engaged group. They met their impact officers, and we went over the impact program. We have another meeting scheduled in this room this Wednesday at 7:00 PM with residents from the Hopewell area. And on the 25th, we're going to have a combined Deerfield Birmingham Zone meeting at 4:00 over in the courtroom on Deerfield. So we're hoping just to refresh folks' memory about our impact program, let them know that they have officers that they can reach out to, to go to directly, that are very familiar with the crimes and, and the issues that each neighborhood is experiencing. So we're very pleased with that. And also, we have a recruit that's graduating the academy this week, and she will begin field training on Monday. So we're pleased to have her. She is a resident of the area and a graduate of Milton High School. Very pleased to have her with us.
Okay, any questions? Matt?
I just want to make a comment on that, too. The, oh gosh, I forgot what you call the recruits, but the, the young police.
Oh, the explorers.
Explorers, explorers, that's what it was, yeah. So they were, I met them at the banquet, and just a great classy group of kids. And I think it's a great program we're doing for the city as well, and I think you should definitely keep that up.
Certainly, we have a lot of resources in that group, and they're doing a phenomenal job, especially being as, as young as the, the group is, on the ground two, two months, they're already winning awards and very active in the community. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right, David?
Good evening. I'll make sure, I got to adjust the volume for myself, hope I don't sound too loud. Well, from the department where we keep things going, nothing too remarkable on the day-to-day stuff, which in my department, no news is good news. We do have a number of things that we're working on as well. Right now, I'm doing an audit on all of our contracts and services, namely with AT&amp;T and all of our phone lines. So pleased to have her, she is a, a resident of the area and a graduate of Milton High School. Very pleased to have her.
Good deal. Okay, any questions? Matt?
I just want to make a comment on that too, the, um, oh gosh, I, I forgot what you call the recruits, but the, um, uh, the young police.
Oh, the explorers.
Explorers, explorers, that's what it was, yeah, so they were, um, I met them at the, at the banquet and just a great classy group of kids and, uh, and I think it's a great program we're doing for the city as well and, and I think you should definitely keep that up.
Certainly, uh, we have a lot of resources, uh, in that group and they're doing a phenomenal job, especially being as, as, uh, young as the, the group is, uh, on the ground, two, two months, they're already winning awards and very active in the community. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Alright, David?
Good evening. I'll make sure, I gotta adjust the volume for myself, I hope I don't sound too loud. Well, from the, uh, department where we keep things going, uh, nothing too remarkable on the day-to-day stuff, uh, which in my department, uh, no news is good news. Um, but we do have a number of things that we're working on as well. Right now, I'm doing an audit on all of our, uh, contracts and services, uh, namely with AT&amp;T and all of our phone lines, uh, to make sure that everything is up to date in technology and also, uh, that we don't have any orphan phone lines or anything like that, so we're going around checking our, all of our phone lines at the fire stations around city hall and cell phone lines, all those things and make sure that everyone's, uh, coordinated and, and up to date. Another thing we're doing is, uh, the, uh, our Laserfish server is going to be installed this week as well. Uh, that's, uh, not just by itself, but also is part of a larger effort to replace our existing servers, uh, that we still have on site. Uh, and that'll be going on this week, so we'll make sure everything's, stays up and running forever, uh, you know, or at least for the, how long do I retire? Anyway, so as long as we can get it going, we'll keep it going. Any questions?
I just have one question, anybody else in this room besides me wonder what a Laserfish is?
I thought it was something that went to an aquarium until I thought about it.
Records management system. So yeah, so that'll be coming online here this summer.
Our new records management system is actually going to allow all of our disparate systems to actually communicate with one another.
That's great. And allow, yes, and allow, uh, more open access online, there'll be a portal for it as well.
Thanks, Dave. Sam?
Good evening.
You got forty-five minutes.
I did. Hour, three minutes and forty-five seconds, the city starts the clock. Um, I've present, uh, the, sorry, when we presented our reports, um, one of the things you'll notice is that we have a considerable amount of vacancies, um, about thirteen showed up on the report. Happy to announce that since that point, we filled about twelve of those jobs. We have seven or eight new firefighters, three policemen are in the loop, have a new facilities manager who started this month, so we're really close to full employment once again, which is really good news. Um, a lot of that was driven and some of our, um, turnover numbers are driven by retirements with the police department, fire department crossing their ten-year anniversary. We had four retirements in the fire department, one more coming in July. We have, um, one retiring an admin coming up this month too, so some of our turnover numbers are driven by that this year, um, which was totally expected. One of the other numbers to look at is our health insurance, because we're getting to start our negotiations for our renewal with, um, Blue Cross Blue Shield or whoever our insurance provider will be. Right now, our premiums, our claims are running about eighty-five percent of premiums, which is a good number, that's about where Blue Cross wants us to be, that, that leaves them room to administer our plan and everything else. So hopefully, we're looking forward, I hope, to a good renewal with Blue Cross this year and our benefits in general. Couple other notes, we're gonna, we met with Kerma last week, over the next few months, we're going to bring in a driving simulator for our police department to, um, do some driving in. And also, they're breaking out a use of force simulator over the course of the next year and they'll be providing that to us to use as well for a period of time. Um, and also, we completed a wellness news, a wellness survey for our employees, um, not too long ago and got some good feedback from them on lunch and learns of where their interests are with wellness and we hope to beef up that program going forward. Are there any questions I can answer?
Any questions? Sam?
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, is there anything else?
One last thing before you all close, I have you all here, uh, does Wednesday at six work for you?
Wednesday at six?
Wednesday at six, I'm, I'm trying to get this in before our attorney, uh, is otherwise disposed, we have GMA coming up, um.
I, I will be out of town starting tomorrow.
Just need a quorum.
I'll be here.
Be here.
Great.
You here, Joe?
I could be.
Or.
It won't take long.
Yeah, I'll be here.
Okay, so I'm gonna, unless something comes out of the, out of the sky, um, Wednesday at six is going to be it.
Thank you.
Thanks. Motion to adjourn?
Okay, if there's anything else, if not, I'll open up for a motion.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Definitely wasn't any questions. Alright, so I got a motion and a second on the paper, please say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.